Alright, like, seven seconds ago, so everybody's been streaming.
Mayor President Morales, it's time.
Yes, yes, I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order, please. You could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiance, the flag for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equitable with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We have the invocation tonight by Father Marco Antonio Bazuto, Bazuto from Immaculate Conception Church. Father Marco.
Good evening, we'll start a prayer. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and good will. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the dignity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. I also ask you to put a stop to COVID in our community, our country, and the whole world. We pray for those who suffer from COVID, the relatives and friends who mourned for the loss of their loved ones who have died. Give us strength, faith, and hope to face and overcome the pandemic with your power and mercy. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We have this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. We pass all this with the words of our Lord Jesus Christ. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our victory, what gives those and the Lord be with you. May Almighty a blessing, Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Father Marco, before you leave, Father Marco, would you please tell us a little bit about yourself and about Immaculate Conception?
Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Father Marco.
Father, can you tell us a little bit about the church and a little bit about yourself?
Okay. I am, I am a flash of praise, the pastor is Father Yoel. I am here since almost three years ago. And then, Immaculate Conception, Community, San Luis, and San Bernardo. Mostly, I cover masses, sacraments, confession, visit in the sick, doing other activities, giving to the people some help. We provide for food boxes in the church and other needs, and other activities for charity during the year. It's mostly what we do, so we are communicating with, in dialogue.
Okay.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you, Father. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Donald Hewish. Mayor President for Margaret Morales.
Present.
Councilmember Mitch Lindeman.
Present.
Councilmember Dania Acosta.
Present.
Councilmember Ray Shelton.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Valdenegro.
Present.
Councilmember Jose Guitara.
Here.
City Manager Honorable Rico.
Present.
The Attorney Dennis Fitzgibbon.
Present.
City Treasurer Rispadoza.
Present.
And, Mayor President for the record, Mayor Donald Hewish is excused.
Alright, thank you, Miss Andrade. Alright. Next item on the agenda is presentation of awards. We have our Gingerbread House Contest winners. In third place, we have Carlos Benaventi. Not sure if he's present. Yes, you could please go forward. They could just stay there until the other winners come up. In second place, I have Mia and Noah Villalobos. No. First place, we have Manuel Cruz and Alex Chavez. Are they present?
We'll just issue the one for first. Can I have a picture?
Carlos. Item number five B is Douglas Business Network Best Christmas Decorated House of 2021. The winners are, in third place, Alexis Rosario, Rosario Family. Are they present tonight? No? Okay. No? Okay. In second place, we have Julie Johnson Flores and Carmen Johnson Flores. And in first place, we have Donna Henderson, Henderson Family.
Where's Donna? Donna is not here.
There. Congratulations to those winners. And there also is the community members' choice, and that is Jeremy and Denise Godoy, the Godoy family.
They're not here. I was gonna ask them.
Well, we want to congratulate them. They did a wonderful job in the Creed decorating, tree, and the house decorating contest this year, so congratulations to all the winners.
Congratulations.
Alright. Next item on the agenda is persons wishing to address the council in writing or verbal on any item not on the agenda. Miss Andrade, do we have any requests?
I'm sorry, Mayor President?
Yes.
It's, Councilmember Acosta has a question for you.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Robles and his wife. They're here with us today with the, the Business Network, since they're the ones that arranged for the Christmas decorated house for this year. I know that they do a lot of community events for us, and I just want to show my appreciation and gratitude for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Robles does do a lot for the community, so I want to thank you myself. Thank you very much. Anyone else, Miss Andrade? No? Okay. Item number seven is discussion, decision on approval of consent agenda items as follows. A, expenditures for the month of December 2021 totaling $3,809,203.43. B, meeting minutes for December 1st and December 8th, 2021.
Mayor President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, let's go back to item number six. When, when you asked if there was any other questions, I, I thought you meant from the councilmembers on the presentation of awards.
Oh, no. You have another speaker?
That will be Ms. Ida and Pedregó, and she would like to address the councilmembers on item number five, or I'm sorry, number six, on the council of the public.
Okay. Yes, Pedregó.
Because Ida and Pedregó, when I reside at 1815 East 15th Street, and I'd like to address the program and the councilmen. As a citizen of Douglas and a pack player, I do not support the sale of the Douglas Municipal Airport. Is it, it is a historical site, not only for the city of Douglas, but for the United States. I believe it is, it is a very important and beneficial icon for our community. It is currently being used for much-needed investors to fly in, to fly in and do their thing and fly back out. Others visit their families, and for others, it's another way to conduct their business. I personally would like to know how many aircrafts fly into the airport on a monthly basis. My other question is, has the city written or attempted to write grant to defray the cost of running the airport, or even for the repairs? Has the city asked the communities what their thoughts are about this sale? How is it, how is the city communicating with their constituents about the sale? When many do not use social media and the city does not have a local newspaper? Just this week, on Thursday, I created flyers trying to notify as many of the community members to attend City Council meetings, not just this one, but all meetings. On Thursday, with the help of other community members, the flyers were sent out, some were made and posted in different areas around the city. Then this Monday, Monday, and the meeting is today Wednesday, we were notified that the meeting was not going to be held at City Hall, but here. Being that I personally knew of the construction being held in the quarters, City Hall, in the council, and yet it was not till Monday till the community was informed. So I really do believe that it's a strong consideration for the representatives of our community. How are we going to communicate with our constituents, and not just the sale of the airport, but all the other things that are happening in our community? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alright. I'm sorry, did somebody have a question?
Yeah, Mayor President?
Yes, Mr. Councilmember Grealha.
We direct staff to give Mrs. Pedregó those numbers that she asked for, on how many aircrafts come into Douglas.
Okay.
Have you asked in the past?
No, sir. I know you've asked, go ahead and ask.
The city, whoever's in charge of the airport.
Well, the city's in charge.
I know, but a person that's in charge of the airport.
May, Dennis, would you like to help?
Sure, I, oh, Miss Andrade, I'll take it. During a call to the public, council can't discuss, I think they can do exactly what council member Rahala asked was to direct staff to get her the information she requested, but that's about all the discussion council can have on an item that comes up in call to the public, because it hasn't been agendized, so other people don't know the item's going to be discussed by council. So I think it's fine to direct staff to get the information to her that she requested, but I think that's all we can really discuss tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I lost the video, so just bear with me here.
We can continue with item number seven, Mayor President?
Yes, no, I just lost the video there for a minute, I'm sorry. I was trying to get it back. So item number seven is discussion decision on approval of consent agenda items as follows. A, expenditures for the month of December 2021 totaling $3,809,203.43. Meeting minutes for December 1st and December 8th, 2021. Item C, Legacy Foundation Innovation Grant Acceptance for the Airport Park Walking Path Lighting. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Yes, Miss Mayor President, I move that council approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Can I have a second? Here, a motion by Mr. Shelton and a second by Councilmember Valdenegro. Any discussion? No? If no discussion, then can I have roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Lindeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Acosta?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdenegro?
Yes.
Councilmember Guitara?
Yes.
Mayor President Morales?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight is discussion decision on item A, which is Resolution Number 22-1483. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Douglas, Cochise County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Douglas and Cochise County to provide certain election supplies and services for the city of Douglas primary and general election scheduled for March 8th, 2022, and May 17th, 2022, respectively. Miss Andrade?
Thank you, Mayor President and councilmembers. What you have in front of you is a resolution with the Cochise County Agreement for Election Services or Supplies for the upcoming primary election of March 8th and the general election for each other amendments for May 17th. It has been practiced for the city of Douglas to contract with the county for selection services, and what the resolution is for your approval as well as for the agreement. And the monies or expenses for both elections will be out of the general fund for 2021, 2022 budgets. And I can entertain any questions if you have any, and also with the attorneys present offering legal questions on that.
Okay, thank you, Miss Andrade. May I have a motion to approve?
President?
Yes, Councilmember Lindeman?
I move that Mayor and Council approve Resolution Number 22-1483.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Lindeman and a second by Councilmember Grealha. Any discussion? If none, roll call, please.
You, Councilmember Lindeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Acosta?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Valdenegro?
Yes.
Councilmember Guitara?
Yes.
Mayor President Morales?
Yes, motion carries. Item number eight is Resolution Number 22-1484. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Douglas, Cochise County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a lease between the city of Douglas and AMP Southwest LLC for 42,000 square feet of vacant land at Joe Causey Park within parcel number 410-14-001K2 for purposes of providing employee parking for construction contractor operations, establishing severability of components, a resolution, and establishing an effective date thereof. Mr. Pedrosa?
Yeah, President? I must recuse myself since I am a member of the school board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lindeman. Please note that Mr. Lindeman recused himself at 6:20 PM.
Thank you.
Mr. Pedrosa?
Hey, Mayor President, members of council. AMP contractors are working on the new addition at the high school behind the high school gym. They approached the city about utilizing the vacant land across the street from the high school gym and adjacent to the Little League Field to be utilized for their employee parking. AMP contractors would like to leave that vacant land. They would like to utilize the space for their employees as they are working on this almost year-long, year-long project there for the expansion of the high school. They can expect up to 75 cars at a time. The contractors are, will, will leave the space for employee and employee parking only, not any heavy machinery or, or any other type of structure. AMP also proposed to improve the property by laying down some AB material to improve those parking conditions. They were also alerted about the utilization of that space during Little League season that potential baseballs could be landing nearby their, their vehicles, and they were are aware and ready to accept that liability towards that. Their working hours are generally from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so we most likely will avoid those conflicts since most Little League games start around 5:30 PM. Although there could be some practices that, that coincide with, with their parking that would generally be alleviated with surrounded park, surrounding parking around the area. And they would have a priority, since they would be obtaining that lease. But like I said, there isn't enough parking around the area to, to be able to mitigate that. The space is approximately 42,000 square feet of unimproved land. About $500 a month would be the, the lease agreement. And again, some improvement that would prolong that even after they, they leave, those, those materials would, would still remain there. The term of the lease is for eight months with an available extension for an additional eight months as well. Staff recommend the approval of the lease agreement with AP contractors to utilize the space for their employees during this construction period to help alleviate the space issues that they have in, in order to continue with their construction project. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve?
Mayor President?
Yes.
I move that Mayor and Council approve Resolution Number 22-1484.
I may have a second?
Sir?
Who, who seconded?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Valdenegro?
The name, okay, I didn't hear. Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Acosta, a second by Councilmember Valdenegro. Any discussion?
Mayor President?
Yes. Councilmember Acosta?
I'm wondering, has the Little League Committee been given a courtesy call just to let them know of the plans for that parking space? I know that you mentioned that should not conflict with games, with maybe practices, and just as a courtesy, give them a call just to let them know to expect maybe some parking issue.
Yes, Councilwoman Acosta, we, we have mentioned that to the president. We'll be sure to, if this lease agreement were to get approved, that we confirm that with them and make any modifications there to whenever they ask for the, for the Little League field and confirm it.
Yeah, just as a courtesy, just to learn that's right, but, and then also, I know it says on here, there's 75 cars would be expected at one time. Do we know more or less how many vehicles fit in that empty space?
Yeah, their approximation is a maximum 75 vehicles. That's about the number of employees that they have, so not to exceed that amount. They expect a lesser amount. They, they stop that with, within that volume, they could fill most likely the eastern most part of that section and, and not fill the whole, the whole area.
Mayor President?
Councilmember Valdenegro?
How do we, on to conclusion, is $500 to be the rental, is that fair market price for the size of lot?
Councilmember Valdenegro, yeah, this is comparable to other vacant lease agreements that we've had with other entities. So we use the, the same square footage amount that we've charged before and applied it to this one.
Okay, any further questions from council discussion?
I have one question. They have the million-dollar liability, maybe more than that, in case something happens.
Councilmember?
And so will we, I know, but, that's pretty rough out there. Comes the rain, it's gonna be muddy. And I, I think that's a good idea. We need to notify the Little League, because we're here in a couple of months. There's gonna be people dropping off their kids, so we need to maybe get a different way of coming in, maybe the back way there and and get them in on the side there. I think that needs to, I'm not sure, I think that needs to be looked at.
Absolutely, Councilmember Shelton. And the answer to your question about insurance, yes, they're required to provide the liability insurance coverage. And with the city.
To them, I mean, in case something happened.
Yes, they're supposed to cover the Yes, they're supposed to cover the city with their with their coverage. We're additionally insured on their policy for any issues that arise. But with with this construction project of this magnitude, the the traffic around the area, it was hard for them to. To designate an area where where that many. People can park without disturbing traffic around. So we, the city, wanted to to help with that. And and also keep within our our regular activities, of course. We we they volunteered to improve, semi improve the the area so that it's not as dusty and it's. Not as rough if they're gonna be coming in and out on a daily basis. So they offered to 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 provide those materials. At their expense.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Acosta?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Balde Negro?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralva?
Yes.
Mayor for example Morales?
Yes, motion carries. All right, thank you.
The mayor of the city of Douglas, Cochise County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a lease between the city of Douglas. And A and P Southwest LLC for forty two thousand square feet of vacant land that Joe Causey Park with a parcel number. Four one zero dash one four dash zero zero one K two. For purposes of providing employee parking for construction contractor operations, establishing severability of components of resolution. And establishing an effective date thereof.
Thank you, Ms. Andrade. And Mr. Lindemann should be coming back.
I'm here.
Yes, six twenty nine. All right, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda. Is discussion decision to call for and conduct an executive session under the authority of A R S. Thirty eight dash four thirty one point zero three. A three, A four, and A seven to consider its position, instruct its representatives, and obtain legal advice. Regarding the negotiations of city owned properties such as north of Eleventh Street, west of Pan American. Avenue with parcel number four zero nine dash zero six dash zero two zero T. Fifteenth Street and Van Buren with parcel number four one zero dash thirty two dash one two one. First Street and F Avenue with parcel number four zero nine dash one three dash one nine zero. And golf course, RV Park and La Paria Apartments with parcel numbers four one zero dash zero eight. Dash zero zero one, four one zero dash zero eight dash zero zero two, four one zero. Zero eight dash zero zero three and four one zero dash zero nine dash zero zero four. May I have a motion to enter into executive session?
I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
May I have a second? Motion by councilmember Shelton, a second by councilmember Balde Negro. We will enter an executive into executive. Oh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lindemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Acosta?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Balde Negro?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralva?
Yes.
Mayor for example Morales?
Yes, please note that we are entering into executive session at six thirty one P M.
Thank you. So we'll have to in a minute.
Okay.
Mayor for ten, we will leave this link and enter the separate link and then we'll return here after.
Okay.
Dennis, did you get that link?
Yes, I did. Thanks.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna leave this one then.
Is everybody back? Anna, you're back?
Yes, can you?
Yes.
I'm having trouble getting back on.
Okay.
I think there we are.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Is everybody back?
I can't tell if council members are back. Well, Zach, can you? Is everyone back in their place?
Yes. Did it over.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody's back in their place. But let me just, so I could rotate the camera for you.
He's back. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn executive session?
Your motion will adjourn the executive session.
Okay, motion by council member Shelton, a second by council member ValdeNegro to adjourn executive session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protempor.
Yes.
Do we have a motion by council member Shelton and second by council member Acosta?
Oh, Acosta, okay, I had ValdeNegro. I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Can I have roll call?
Yes, council member Lindeman?
Yes.
Council member Acosta?
Yes.
Council member Shelton?
Yes.
Council member ValdeNegro?
Yes.
Council member DeCanta?
Yes.
Mayor Protempor Morales?
Yes, executive session adjourned at 8:08 PM. Thank you. Next item is item 98. Update with possible direction on the following properties. North of 11th Street, west of Pan American with parcel number 409-06-020-T, 15th Street and Van Buren with parcel number 410-32-121, First Street and F Avenue with parcel number 409-13-190, and Golf Course, RV Park, and La Parilla Apartments with parcel numbers 410-08-001, and 410-09-004. Council has given direction to staff to move forward with the sale and or lease of properties and purchase agreements. We'll come back to council members for approval at a future meeting. Next item on the agenda. Hold on.
Point of order, Mayor Protempor, is, is that update only for the last item of the golf course? Or are we updating all?
This is for all the items on the, on the...
All-inclusive, yeah.
Oh, all-inclusive, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is, um, city manager updates. And then I'll do the mayor's update. So I have, city manager, can I have Ms. O'Keeho to give updates?
Yes, thank you. I will be brief. I do want to inform mayor and council that the 99 Cent store opening has been delayed until late February, it's estimated, due to some supply delays in completing the remodel. So we will keep you posted on that. I know we were looking forward, I think, to January 25th, potential opening date. So we will bring more information on that. I wanted to remind everyone and thank everyone for availability. We are planning on a council retreat to do some visioning on the future of our beautiful city. We were scheduling for the 25th, and we will get all of those notices posted very soon and get more information on that. I wanted to update you also on the 80-acre gift and land donation to GSA. That process is underway. We expect to have a gift acceptance agreement in one of our March meetings is what I'm anticipating. Overall, once we've gone through all of the layout of the process with GSA, it seems to be a 90 to 120-day process to get that land recorded and switched over. So that is moving along. And just a reminder that we are at the visitor center because of continued remodeling and at city hall in the council chambers. So we hope to return as soon as possible. We're costing up in this February. That's what I have into the city manager report. Did you want me to cover any other items, Mayor Protemp? Or did you have some items as well?
I was just going, I'm sorry. I was just going to report that we are having a mayor's luncheon at the visitor center next Wednesday, June the 19th, January the 19th. And we will have representatives from the various cities attended, in attendance. You mentioned about the council retreat on the 25th, is that correct?
Yes.
College, uh-huh. That's all I have. And I will have, um, I know I wanted to thank the Legacy Foundation and staff for the airport park walking path lighting grant. That was, if you give me the pink amount, Ms. O'Keeho. I think it was, um...
Yes. Yes, that was a wonderful, successful grant opportunity by staff. That grant amount is $96,471 that will go to LED lighting around the airport park, park walking path. So we're looking forward to that.
Okay. And then one other report, I'll go ahead, for public awareness. Recently, there has been a rash of incidents. Core ICE office phone numbers, both ERO and HSI, and including the HSI Phoenix Main phone line, have been spoofed by telephone scammers. The scammer calls with a number on caller ID reflecting the real ICE phone number and claims to be an ICE agent and threatens arrest against the person they are calling or a family member of the person they are calling. Please let your contact list know that this is occurring and remind them that ICE nor any other law enforcement agency will ever call looking for money under threat of arrest. If persons are contacted by a person claiming to be an ICE agent, they should not make any payment and report the phone call to the ICE tip line And that's 1-866-DHS2ICE. Or you can, via the internet, at www.ice.gov/tipline. And again, that number is on our website if you need it. And that's all I have. And I will now ask the council, any of the council members have any reports for future reference or agenda items that they would like to bring up?
Yes. Oh, okay. Yeah. Ladies that are not here today, we need to keep them in our prayers or thoughts. And we need to keep our mayor in our prayers and thoughts at this time. So that's what I'd like to say, thank you.
Mayor Protemp, I wanted to let everybody know commodities day tomorrow, the 17th. It usually falls on the Monday, but that's Martin Luther King Day. And I also wanted to publicly thank Mrs. O'Keefe and Parks and Rec Jennifer Smith. If you all haven't seen Facebook, the city is planning to sponsor basketball league, a men's basketball league, to give our community something more to do. The plan is for me to be out there and playing. So if you want to have a good laugh, you can always go and watch me play. But I do appreciate our staff thinking of the community first. And hopefully, we can get Bruce out there to cover some of the games and just have fun, you know. All your help, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindeman, do you have anything?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Mrs. Acosta, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing.
All right. Mr. ValdeNegro?
Nothing at all, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. And if someone would like to make a motion for an adjournment?
Protemp, can I just, one announcement, just for the public's sake about the garbage schedule change that's coming this Monday due to the Martin Luther King holiday. The garbage pickups will move up a day. Basically, if you're gonna, if you get picked up on Mondays, you will be picked up on Tuesday. If you get picked up on Tuesday, you will get now picked up on Wednesday. So that just moves a day ahead, and offices will be closed on Monday.
Monday. Okay. And that's on Facebook, too, that we're closed on Monday. That city hall is closed, and it's on the digital sign-out side, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Lindeman.
Mayor Protemp, I left one item out, and I apologize. If it's okay, if I can go back, I didn't scroll down to my page.
Yes.
It's on my city manager report, if I may. It's relevant to some of the call to the public that was made earlier because we, I wanted to also let the public know that staff is working on some tentative February dates that will be posted to our website and in our social media accounts by next week on some citizen engagement meetings regarding the airport. I know we've been working on that. We've been working also on some appraisal for the property. So our plan is to host three meetings in February to inform and update the community on the airport sale concept as we were directed by council and as well as gather input. So those community engagement meetings are forthcoming. And it's kind of relevant to something that came up. And it is something underway. So just wanted to let you all know, you'll get more information on those as well.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. O'Keeho.
Thank you.
All right. There is no further business. May I entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Shelton and a second by Mrs. Acosta to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. We adjourned at 8:19 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a good night, everybody.
Take care.
Take care. Good night.